Being 7:00, call this meeting to order for the Oxford Planning Board, June 13th, 2022. First item on the agenda is, at 7:00 PM, it's planned not requiring subdivision approval for 110 Depot Road. Turn the, do you want to see the plan?
Yeah.
Well, wait.
I got it right here.
No, I need the form.
The A and R form.
In the front, Craig.
Right in the front.
Oh, right where it says A and R application.
Yep.
We'll turn the meeting over to our A and R Subcommittee Chairperson. Did I say that right?
I guess, though we never define it. That's what it is.
Vice Chairman.
Vice Chairman.
Okay. We have a application for endorsement of a plan not believed to require subdivision approval dated April 28th, 2022, and Joel Cluthier. Survey was Javis Land Survey, and the property is on map 16, parcel D08.03, and an R2 suburban Purposes to generate three lots. It all has frontage on Federal Hill Road and Depot Road. I didn't see any issues with it.
No.
Plenty of frontage.
Plenty of frontage.
So do you, so...
Are all these being cut out of lot...
Manning is an existing lot.
This one here, maybe? I don't know.
So it goes right around the corner of Depot Road, sort of, and that's where you're going to...
Yeah, the two lots on the left here.
So it's how about Lot 1, or Lot 1?
Those would be on Federal Hill, and then there's a, the other lot, Lot 1, is on the corner of Depot and Federal.
So you'll access that lot from Depot Road to the left of the house existing there now?
There's a house existing on Lot 1, which is right on the corner next to the barn. See where it says barn?
Yeah.
There's a house right up above. That's the existing lot. You know, right now it's just one big lot.
Right.
That was my question, yeah.
And these two lots down here are for potential future building, which would be accessed by Federal Hill Road.
Right. But on Lot 1, you got access from Depot Road?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Now, do you own, you don't own the land, right?
No, my grandmother owns it.
Oh, okay. I just wasn't sure what the relationship was. Okay.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Um.
Okay. Entertained a motion to approve this as a plan not requiring subdivision approval.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? There being none? Full call. No votes voting in favor.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
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 Carried unanimously. Turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, it being 7:05, we'll have, we have a continued public hearing for number two, Fairlon Ave., application for special permit and site plan review. Let's see what we got. Do we receive anything new? New plans? Why don't we...
Have they, have they in that package?
I got it right here.
Oh, okay. Oh, I got them.
Why don't we start off by having the engineer go through the revisions to the plan?
Yeah, I'll do.
Peter Engel, floor engineering.
Four spaces required before we have a dumpster on this western portion. We move that to the front with an enclosure. Yep, sorry. So we moved the dumpster to the east of the building with enclosure. Got rid of one space over here. We were able to replace that space on the end. We also added a privacy fence along that northern side over here, some additional striping to kind of... Additional parking over there, employee-only signs, a curb along the sidewalk. And then we had a privacy fence on this side before we were proposing vinyl. In making that a parking space, you know, you wouldn't be able to see in that direction if that was a solid fence. And likely, these cars are going to be backing out onto Fairlon, so we revised that into some kind of either chain link or split rail or low planting, kind of give a buffer, but still allow for some sight line when going out on the Fairlon. And I believe, oh, and then additional privacy fence up in this northwest corner. So I think that was all the changes we made based on that last meeting.
I think you did a pretty good, yeah, I think you did a pretty good job on the front towards Main Street with the three spots and allowing some additional snow storage there and the curb to keep them off the sidewalk. I think, yeah, I think you satisfied everything that we asked for.
Are the three spots there now, is that eight feet I'm looking at?
Yeah, so these are compact, right? These are compact.
Eight feet, that's fine. I mean, just one. That's fine.
Those will be employee only anyways, so.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe there was on a butter, they were talking about the privacy fence in the back.
Yep.
I think they, I think they also wanted one on the left side of the building also, if I'm not mistaken.
So we have one on the northeast next to the dumpster.
Yep.
And then we added one. There's a, there's some existing vegetation on that property line, kind of where those bearings and businesses are. So we added a fence up along that western, northwestern side.
Along the north side, that over there. They were concerned about trash blowing.
Yeah, I mean, now that we're moving the dumpster from that back left corner.
Okay, so there's only going to be one dumpster?
Yeah. And that'll be fenced in.
That's all enclosed, yeah.
And does the privacy fence go all the way in the back or no?
Basically goes from the sidewalk to the corner of the building.
And then on the other side, the same?
No, we didn't add it. We, the privacy fence back here is along this western property line.
So that back where it says zoning setback, so that's, is that like open to them or, because now...
I think there's some vegetation there. I don't think it's wide open. There's an old fence there. There's some trees over on this left side.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Any residents of Butters here want to talk about this project at all? Okay. Have we received any other correspondence regarding this project? And would want to...
And the packing's appropriate for how many?
And all the parking conforms with the zoning?
Yep.
Okay. So we have a motion by Jeff to close the public hearing?
Second.
Seconded by Roger? Not Roger.
Yeah.
Is there any, any more discussion?
All right, there being none, call for a vote. I'll vote aye.
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 Motion carried unanimously.
Entertained a motion that we approve the special permit and site plan for R2 Fairlon Avenue. dated by 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? There being none, call for the vote. I'll vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you. Good luck.
I'd like to take care of that.
Yeah.
I know. They're doing a lot to improve that all day.
My agenda disappeared. Okay, you being 7:10, we have a public hearing for 46, 48, and 50 Harwood Street. Application for special permit and site plan review. Oh, I'm sorry, special permit and land disturbance permit. Applicant and owner is DJ Enterprises. Common driveway to serve three lots.
You got to read the public hearing notice. Read the public hearing notice.
Jim Smith, Topper Land Survey?
Yes.
Hold on one second.
Didn't make a file.
You have a copy of the plan, so?
I think, I think this is the copy.
Yeah, no, it's not that. It's that... Reed needs, that's what I asked him, read it.
Please stand by.
While we're waiting, Mr. Chairman, we are waiting on Graves Engineering to assist with the review of this, so we hope to expedite it during this time of year.
Hi.
Okay, I will read the public hearing notice pursuant to the provisions of the Oxford zoning bylaw, Chapter 11, Section 1.5, common driveway. The Oxford Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 13th, 7:10 PM, in the second floor, meeting room of the Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. On a special permit application submitted by DJ Enterprises, Inc. to allow the construction of a common driveway to serve three lots identified as 46, 48, and 50 Harwood Street, owned by the applicant by deed recorded with the Worcester Registry of Deeds Book 57584, page 228, and shown on assessor's map 50D as parcels A 1.05, A 1.1, and 1.11. Application and plans may be reviewed at the Oxford Town Hall in the office of the town clerk or land management department. Anyone desired to be heard on this matter should appear at the place, date, and time designated or submit written comments before the date of the hearing to the Planning Board of 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. 01540C. MassPublicNotices.org for legal notice. All right, so if you want to introduce yourself and say your name.
Jim Smith from Topper Land Survey. I guess I'm really here just to open a meeting like that, because we don't have any of the comments back from Graves or anything else, so this is more to open the meeting and present it to you.
Okay.
Sure, we'll have another meeting too, hopefully one. But it's a common driveway to serve three lots that are in the rear.
It's just Mary sending it to the...
How long is the driveway going to be?
So the driveway is approximately, a common portion of the driveway?
Yeah.
Is approximately 240 feet.
Through the chair, my only concern is that, we haven't heard from the fire department either, if the turnaround at the end of the common driveway is big enough for their vehicles.
I don't think we have comments back, but if you look at page... Seven of seven. They're accommodating the truck pull around right at the end of the common driveway.
Yeah, again, I just want to verify that from a fire department point of view, they have enough. Their trucks got big, too. Get the same problem as a lot of roads they have to converse with and...
And we'll get written comments from the board.
Yeah, I was surprised there were no other comments, to tell you the truth. This was advertised.
Through the chair, would be some kind of maintenance agreement between the two projects?
Oh, yes. Yep.
Yeah, we'll need that documented, too.
I believe everything is submitted. All the drainage is submitted. We just haven't anything back in the comments yet.
Okay. Anybody, any comments from the board? Anybody from the, any Butters or would you like to speak on the project? If you do, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
No, pardon.
Don't be shy.
Yeah.
I'm Michael Stewart, 54 Harwood Street. And the shy one's Patricia McQueen. She's also at 54 Harwood Street.
Okay.
So we're in front of one of the houses, I believe it's number 50 on the map.
This parcel here, where this lot is.
Yep. As I read it, there's going to be another cul-de-sac in that lot behind us with a settling pond.
Yeah, there will be a basin. I'll show you the plan there. So here is, I believe you're Lot 7?
Yes.
So there's a basin here, proposed basin here. This is where they're going to have the septics. So the actual common portion is this throat here.
Right. And there's another driveway.
This is an easement across this lot to get to this. And then they have, they proposed like a circular drive so they can reverse and come back out again.
Any other comment? I have, are they firm in the address numbers on these houses back there? Because number 50, the frontage is actually beyond number 56.
Right.
Yeah. And I had a little problem 30 years ago on Larded Road. They changed the address like three times for us. That's a hassle.
I think the, I think the assessors assigned, already signed them the street addresses when they, when the A and R was developed. I don't, I can't tell you what they are, but if you hadn't got any notice, you're not going to get yours changed. They're going to, they're either going to be A Bs or Cs or something.
Or reerror.
Yeah, or reerror. They're going to use designations for those lots. They're going to have a different address.
Because two of those lots, the frontage, I believe, is towards the French River more.
Yeah.
And so for those two lots, will be another separate agreement if he's accessing that lot?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be an easement across, yeah, the lot to get to the low side.
Those two lots.
Yes. Yep, exactly.
Yeah, it'll be built into the deed of that second.
That's right.
Second lot, right.
But it'll be up to that first lot to maintain their driveway.
Right. Yeah, they'll all have agreement on the common portion.
Yeah.
Those two will have another agreement on that section.
Yeah, I just wanted, like I said, my, my concern is the fire department has a big enough turnaround at the intersection of all three of those driveways.
I think we did accommodate that, but, I mean, we'll obviously wait for their comments or, and revise whatever they need.
Yeah, I don't think it is going to be big enough either. They need a lot of room to turn around.
Well, yeah, so...
It's almost like you need a cul-de-sac at the end of the driveway.
Good-sized hammerhead for them.
Yeah, he's got a T configuration, is what he did.
Okay. Yeah, well, like I said, we just want verifications with the fire department.
That was just the least impact.
That's the whole, yeah.
And if it's not adequate, obviously.
And how far is it to the next lot, last lot? There are the two lots, the chair and the other one.
Over here?
Yeah. Same thing. If they had to access that one, too, they're going to want, it's that far. Looks to me like it's 100 feet or so.
Yeah. Well, at that point, it just becomes a driveway. So the idea is the common.
Yeah.
Where they're all, just like it would be off the road.
Right, accessory.
Right, right. So your common driveway is going to be just like, built just like a subdivision road.
Right.
Okay, to service these lots.
Right. Yeah, there's a throat of 50 feet wide through there.
Yeah, yeah, that's the, that's the...
Reduce lot frontage.
Yeah.
Have you already gone through conservation?
I don't believe so. Uh, we, you know what? They did way back in the beginning, so I'm not too sure when they proposed the work to clear the lots. So if you look, it's, a lot of it's already been cleared.
Yep.
Those are all constructed. So I can't speak for sure if conservation is...
I thought at the last meeting, was it Dan? Was Dan here?
Dan, the owner, yeah.
I thought he said that he'd already gone through conservation.
He may have.
Might have, yeah.
Does that make sense, Tony?
On the whole.
On the whole original piece.
On the whole property.
I believe so.
I'll check with the agent on that tomorrow.
I mean, it really doesn't matter, but...
It is a sensitive area, though. You have a 200-foot riverfront right there, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I would think they would have hammered that out, but...
I think there's like an endangered area in back, too, right? Or at least a designated area. That certainly means...
Remember it coming up in tech review?
Yeah, the French River is right there.
I know that each individual lot has had to go through stormwater management, whether it's through the planning board. Most of them have been through the planning board, but if they're approaching on any of the wetlands, they would have to go through conservation.
Well, I guess my, my problem is if they did have to go through conservation, we should have something in our file that says that, that they have had, you know, activity with the Conservation Commission. Conservation, I understand the Conservation Commission isn't, when it's in their jurisdiction, they take over. We don't. But we don't, we have nothing in our file that tells us that they've been through conservation.
Well, they're kind of, I mean, they're just taking a chance, coming through us before conservation.
Oh, yeah.
Conservation booths, and they'll be back here with new plans.
We wouldn't do anything until it's...
And typically, when they have to submit for a building permit application, if they've gone through conservation, we would have to have a recorded copy of the order of conditions.
Yeah, but I think from, from our file point of view, we should, when they're done doing something like that, we should tie it into our folder so we know it, too. Not that we're asking anybody else if they've been through.
I should have known, but I'm just covering, so I apologize.
I understand. No, I understand. I understand you're here to cover the thing.
Through the chair, I think Dan did say that he had all of it done. I think he did.
And I know he's been working on it for several years, though.
Yeah.
Closest of front, we're all his.
So you're just covering, so we have 15 more questions to ask.
Okay. I will take them. I will find out an answer.
Did you get your answer? Are you... Okay. Any other questions or comments from the, from the audience? All right, there being none, I assume we probably want to continue?
Yeah, but I'll make, yeah, okay. I'll make a motion that we continue this meeting to two weeks. What's that, 27th?
Do you want to do it on that night, though?
Yeah.
Because that's the night of the Depot Road, right? Do we want to do it that night?
Right, that is the night of...
What time do we schedule them? Right off, right off the bat?
No, there's another one. Yeah. We had to put one in. We better not get an A and R that night.
We might want to go another one out, maybe. I don't know. Dan wants to be here all night.
When does Dan want to get started on this?
Yeah.
Sooner than later. That's why, I mean...
If he wants to be.
We didn't even want to wait for the comments. He just wanted to make sure that the...
Hey, you just get, get him on it.
Put it on, yeah.
Get him on at 7:20 even, and if he's got to sit here till late 20, whatever, that's what it'll be.
I'm sure he'll be happy about that. Well, just, it's moving forward.
He might be sending you again.
No, no, not me. I'm in the woods.
I'll second that.
Motion by Rich to extend this to 27.
27 and 7:20.
And seconded by Jeff. Any other comments? There being none, call for the vote. I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. So we'll see you then. Or probably Dan, right?
Probably Dan. Or Steve. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you, Dan.
Take care. Being 7:15, we have a public hearing at 221 Old Webster Road. Application for special permit. Application and owner, Stephen Esposito Jr. and Michelle Barch. Construction of addition for in-law apartment. This public hearing has been rescheduled to June, oh, June 27th at 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
Just a little F.I.I. for everybody.
This one didn't get through the T and G and get advertised properly.
Correct, due to an error in the newspaper.
So...
Was anybody in the public here for that, or?
No, they must know about it, yeah. I'll make a motion that we reschedule, that we reschedule it to June 27th at 7:00 PM. Because you, you just did that, Mary, because you had to fit time in for it, right? It wasn't done.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll just make it official.
I think Tony took care of it.
So do we have to do motion by Rich?
Yeah, and I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? There being none, call for the vote. I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Okay, action items. Minutes for May 23rd, 2022. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes?
No, I, Mary emailed them to us. I hope everyone read them.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 23rd, 2022.
I'll second it.
Motion by Rich, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? There being none, call for the vote. I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Aye.
Carried with one extension, abstention. Okay, next up is history estate subdivision, acceptance of proposed covenant as surety, acceptance of proposed drainage and access easement, acceptance of roadway maintenance covenant, review, confirmation of receipt of inspection and legal fees, endorsement of definitive plan. Come on up.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to tee this up a little bit, we have, as you've read the several items for consideration tonight, we do have a proposed covenant that was reviewed by our council in, in your submission, as well as the proposed drainage access easement and roadway maintenance agreement. Council on the drainage access easement just made a note as a reminder that the easement would have to be approved through the Board of Selectment, but certainly that this board could review the drainage access easement to, to form. It will require, though, that, that there be a title certification note from the applicant's attorney to, prior to the Board of Selectment accepting it, let us say. Certainly, this board could provide a recommendation to, to Board of Selectment. These items were all part of the, prior to the endorsement of the, of the covenant and prior to the endorsement of the, I should say, endorsement of the definitive plan. So as mentioned, we do have the covenant, we do have the, the drainage access easement, the roadway maintenance agreement, and we do have a receipt of inspection legal fees by, by the applicant. And as the applicant will discuss, we are awaiting the definitive plan on mylar from the applicant, so that, just so you know, it was not included in your plans this evening, but everything else was. So I just wanted to introduce that.
Should we just put the whole thing off until the next meeting, then? Not going to sign the, sign the mylars then?
It is certainly up to the board, but the covenants are, are, are ready.
Okay.
And so just wanted to share that with you.
Whatever the board wants to do.
Well, we can't complete everything because we don't have the plans, right?
Right.
Yeah, close that, yeah.
And stick it to everything altogether.
No, he's right. You can't do anything without the plan, so, I mean, we could...
I don't know. I think it would be better if the, the date of endorsement on all these are the same night. Endorse some things tonight and wait till the next meeting for the plan? What's that buy at? Doesn't really buy anything.
Oh, no, it doesn't buy any time.
If they want, if they wanted to do the next meeting, I mean, we could clear up all the details tonight. If they want, if they wanted to do the next meeting, I mean, we could clear up all the, uh, the details tonight, and then all we do is we just sign the Mylar at the next meeting. I mean, we can do that, Tony, can't we? Because we, I mean, we had, we don't really have a huge agenda tonight. It's up to you, it's up to you.
I'm fine either way, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm fine either way, yeah.
I think it's better, because that next meeting, we already have it, the twenty-seventh's going to be a one meeting.
I mean, what is your plan, I mean?
With the, yeah, we discussed it, that they would have to be signed before the Mylar, so that's why he thought we'd do them all tonight.
Yeah, they, I mean, the covenants.
They have to be done before the Mylar anyway, so that's why he proposed.
Okay. Pleasure of the board.
I'm easy, either way.
You want to make a motion that we?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, the covenant.
And all the other documents.
Yep.
You've got the originals set up to be signed.
Yep.
This is just for our consideration, I think.
So, we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mark, Mark, right?
Matt.
Matt, sorry.
I had name problems tonight.
Any more discussion?
Uh, just one comment on the release of covenant, the date of tonight's meeting is actually the thirteenth.
Yep.
Uh, the release of covenant?
The release of covenant. Says June fifteenth.
So, this document here, this pertains to, um, the upcoming item regarding Monument Estates?
Yeah, you've got the originals in here, that's why, Tony's talking about all these things, I'm not even.
No, I don't have, this is different.
This, this one here pertains to.
Monument Estate, not History Estates.
They were all in together.
Okay. And then, um, and I'm happy to share.
These are just, yeah, these are the ones.
This is, this is what we're talking about.
But he has the originals.
This is the, the covenant, covenant. Roadway Maintenance Agreement?
Yep.
And then the, um, the Drainage Easement.
Yep.
The Drainage Easement is just a one-sheeter, roadway maintenance is a one-sheeter, and, um, the covenant is.
No, this is, this is Monument Estate.
And then.
Yeah, that's Monument.
Yes, that, that one is Monument.
I always see that one.
So, there's three for history and one for monument, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Did I get them roadway names? Oh, yeah.
I can, I can explain monuments as well.
Should we, we'll do this first, and then you can.
Yeah.
Just separate, right, obviously?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, I think we're still in discussion. Any more discussion? All right, there being none, recall for the vote, I'll vote aye.
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 She, Christine signs everything?
I think we all have the same.
These are the originals, right?
Those are the originals, I think Christine's the only one who has to sign it, right? Doesn't have, which one is that?
Covenant.
So, Ms. Bird is the designee, if you will, for signatures to be recorded at the registry?
Yeah.
For the A and R and so on, yeah, so.
Whole bunch of lines on that one.
On that one there.
So, we all sign this? We all sign this?
Yeah, we, we can distribute for signatures, um, we also have the release of.
Yeah, any one of them.
The others are, are single signatures.
Yep.
Well, that was part of my comments, that, uh, we usually do the same thing with, everyone has to sign the plans, we used to go around and sign everything all at the same time.
Lay them all out, yeah.
But you can, I don't have pens either. You've got a pen.
I have your pen.
I got a pen.
Mary, do you have any extra pens? I usually.
Well, we can wait for that.
We only have to sign the covenant, the covenant one, right? And.
Yeah, I, I would, I would sign the covenant with all signatures, and then the other separate documents. We can, um, we can.
Do you do a noderize, yeah?
She has to get a noderize.
I can do that.
Oh, you can, oh, you can't, because she didn't have to be the.
Tony, I'm thinking, you have a pen? Thank you. Do you want me to sign the other two, then, and then Mary can just noderize it after?
The ones that are just signed by you?
Yep. The Maintenance Agreement and the Drainage.
Yes.
No signature needed for the Drainage, because.
It's going to be what?
Board of Selectmen.
Oh, Board of Selectmen, okay.
You guys need a pen? I'm good.
Yep.
You what? Passed down.
Mary, do you want me to, to write out my name too, or just sign it?
I'll, I'll finish it.
Okay.
So, at the next meeting, we'll have to do the Mylar.
Yep.
In the meeting, spread them out on the table.
Yeah. Always good.
It doesn't matter where, as long as you've got enough room.
Two sheets, and we'll do the cover sheet of the other document. Yes, Mr. Chairman, so nothing further on, on this item for history. Next meeting, the applicant's engineer will get it on Mylar, and there is.
And we'll sign them.
Five or six items, and as part of the approval, that was a requirement to be on the plan.
Yep.
Um, the radius, I think, as you mentioned, and other items on there, so.
Lots of blanks to fill in, Mary.
There are.
Yeah, well, I believe you're assigned the covenant as well, Jeff, it's a.
Yeah.
You're assigned too, as the applicant.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm supposed to sign in front of you, right?
Yeah. Yep. So, do you want to sign it first?
It's getting confused on you.
Yeah, I know, I mean, yeah, I didn't even see that. I, I kind of put them all together, I thought, yeah. So, Monument Estates is another covenant we've got to do.
Yeah.
Jeffrey?
I'll be right.
Middle initial? Okay. I'll have to, um, get my official serial ID and scan. Sure, yeah, I can.
You don't have to worry about me stamping it.
You can come back tomorrow.
Thank you.
Good luck. Um, next item is the Monument Estates Subdivision Release of Covenant. Tony, if you want to explain that.
Yes, sure, and I believe Attorney Proctor is here as well, um, but just to provide a, an overview, oh, come right ahead. Here is the plan for, uh, Monument Estates for the subdivision that was endorsed by, by the board back in, it was two thousand and three or so. And, um, during that time, there was, um, over the years, I think in maybe oh-six or so, there was partial, um, uh, release of, partial release of covenant that included, um, many of the parcels, many, many of the lots, with the exception of this parcel X. Right up here. And this was to be part of the, as I'm told, the original discussions of the D.A.R. monument location. The other parcels, when the roadway was accepted, the other parcels, parcel Y, parcel Z, parcel W, those in green, were all relative to, to, to drainage. And they were noted on the plan at the time, parcels W, X, Y, and Z are not buildable lots. During, um, the search of title, parcel X belongs to Graves, the parcel for History Estates, a large, that larger parcel belonged to Graves, two tracks on one deed. During title search, parcel X came up as this was never, um, released from the original monument. So, I'll turn it over to Attorney Proctor to, um, he did prepare a release of covenant, um, there's, there's a slight error on the date, as, uh, Mr. McCarthy mentioned, but it's going to be corrected. It does note here that, uh, pertains to parcel X, and, um, I think closes the, the gap here. But I'll turn it over, if I may, to Attorney Proctor.
Tony did a pretty good job just, uh, describing everything that happened, but this little parcel X fell through the crack. And, uh, I got the title report from Gould Title, if anybody wants to see it, I got it here, and that little parcel X showed up as an issue. So, when I brought it to Tony's attention, we all agreed that there was no reason to, um, not to release parcel X, it should have been released a long time ago, but we didn't. And, um, if we release in the covenant, we should be able to catch parcel X along with that. And we don't need it to put the monument, because the monument's going to have other plans. In fact, I think it's down the street right now, on Maple Ave, as far as I know. And since Mr. Graves passed away, uh, he's the only one that wanted the monument up on the hill, and he's not here, so there's nobody interested in putting it up on the hill, or probably a better place for it is where everybody can see it in town, anyway. So, that's kind of where that whole thing went. So, it was just a matter of just cleaning up the record and clearing the title on that X, little tiny piece.
And with respect to parcel X, and one of the things, when, when I saw this, okay, how does this again fit to history? The plans to history, each lot is separate, it doesn't factor in parcel X, it's all woodland, about six thousand, six thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven square feet, um, directly adjacent to the Carroll property. And so, um, other than this issue with title, um, don't see any other conflicts with the approved plan of History Estates, because again, it was separate. Completely separate stormwater review, that came, one of the first things I thought of, um, in completely separate, um, record. But, interestingly, it's a lingering piece that was left.
Okay.
So, Attorney Proctor did prepare a release of covenant, um, just a minor change on the date, um, do note the era on there, um, and, um, similar to the release of covenant, the, I, the identical language that have been done in the past, um, with just one signature required with, uh, nordization as well.
Should we just wait and get the actual, with the corrected date on it, make it nice and neat? Or were you thinking about, like, scratching it out and putting a new number in?
No, I, if. Up to the pleasure of the board, um, if this, if you wish to approve tonight, we.
What, what's two days, other than the fact that meeting is on the thirteenth? Why don't we just vote to approve it tonight, and Christine will come to the odds and sign it the fifteenth?
Richard, I can probably answer that. After we leave here, there's a, there's another whole stream of events that takes place. First, we've got to clear the title, get everything recorded that needs to be recorded, then the mortgage company's got to review all of that, start the package process to get the mortgage, so it's like a whole stream of series events that happen after that, so that's why I kind of wanted to get that done tonight. And if you want, I can just run down to your office, change that date, come right back.
Okay, why don't you do that? I mean, we're going to be here a while, we've got a few more things to go down.
That's fine.
If you can just zip over and fit, change it to the thirteenth, then we'll sign it for you tonight.
All right, let me see, what's, do you have that and what date you want changed to?
Can we, um.
You can just skip this and keep.
Postpone the meeting for, for whatever? Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be right back.
Okay.
Give me a couple of minutes.
All right. Sounds good to me.
One, one other minor on it, I'm not sure which is the proper spelling, it says Monument Estate, definitive subdivision, instead of Estates, plural, but in our meeting, it says Estates, so. While you're making a correction.
Which line are you on?
Yeah, Tony's got it.
Right above Old Stone Land Survey Company Monument.
Just in case the registrar has a problem with it.
Oh, just plural.
Yeah.
States plural.
Yeah.
Got it? Anything else to spot? I have to speak to myself about time zones.
Grab some coffee on your way back.
Yeah.
So, so Tony, I have a question, so number five, you're saying X was not part, like, if you go to the top five, it doesn't include X, was that it? On the top?
This here?
Oh, it did include X.
I just highlighted this because they're noted as not buildable lots.
Okay.
When there were a release of, release of covenant.
It was just there to place a monument, that's all it was.
I believe, I believe there were maybe two releases of, of covenant over the time, and in two thousand and six, the roadway was accepted, and as part of process, as we know, the drainage would have to be accepted too. And where parcel X did not provide drainage, it wasn't included in anything. So, it's interesting now how it sort of catches up, right?
Yeah, it'll catch up eventually.
Fifteen years later.
It's like, who is, is, is the Graves Estates still the owner of that property, I guess? Because that was the whole, the whole thing, is they're going to try to deed it to the town, and it just was.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we move on? So, you're going to hustle out there and come back?
Yeah. Give me a few minutes.
You don't have to hustle. All right, uh, next up is Cathy Way Subdivision, acceptance of a performance bond as surety.
And Mr. Chairman, also tonight, we have Mr. Conrad Allen, who will provide an overview of, of where, where he is with the project.
Excellent, thank you.
We do have a communication from Graves Engineering, a revised cost estimate, um, for your reference, and in earlier, this stems back from the May cost estimate that was, I'm sorry, the March cost estimate that was provided by the, um, buyer peer reviewer. So, this is a revised cost estimate in consideration of Mr. Conrad's request to, to review the numbers, uh, to revise the numbers due to some work that has already been done on the site.
Okay.
Let me turn it over now.
And you're comfortable with those revised numbers, Tony?
Correct, I, happy to go through them.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for taking the time. A couple of questions, I, I'm trying to find out the bond amount, if it's the revised, given from Graves Engineering, or the original? I mean, I presume it's the revised.
I would assume so.
Yes, and, and if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to, to review this into the record, so, um, on June tenth, twenty-twenty-two, Graves provided a memo to you, um, states here, per the request of the Oxford Planning Board, and the developer, Graves Engineering, prepared an updated engineer's opinion of construction cost estimate for Cathy's Way subdivision, and the estimate is based upon visits performed by G.A.I. through June eighth, twenty-twenty-two, and this supersedes their previous estimate dated March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. The point-by-point items he highlights here, uh, the estimate is for the proposed work within the right-of-way and grading, associated road and utility construction only, the estimate does not include any proposed work associated with lot development. The estimate is based upon the following document, plans entitled Definitive Subdivision Cathy's Way, located on Webster Road, Oxford, Mass, dated February fifth, twenty-fourteen, revised April sixteenth, twenty-fourteen. He said notes here that contrary to what was reported to G.A.I., the off-road drainage has not been installed yet. Next item, the developer has received approval to utilize two concrete water tanks with a pipe connection between the tanks in lieu of a single fiberglass tank. a pipe connection between the tanks in lieu of a single fiberglass tank. GAI understands the tanks have been manufactured, and the tanks are connecting pipe, have not been installed nor tested for water tightness. The unit cost of tank has been adjusted to reflect the change in tank configuration." So this was a request from Mr. Allen to change the original cost called for fiberglass tanks. And, oh, absolutely, please.
We went before the Oxford Fire Department, talked to them about the fiberglass tanks, and they weren't comfortable with it because of what happened at Home Depot. You had some rain storms, and you had three submarines coming up, which were your tanks. And they prefer the concrete tanks because of the weight and the lack of buoyancy. So the Oxford Fire Department came before the planning board, and it got revised, as I understand it.
Yes, and that was confirmed again with fire, so they are okay, they are fine with the modification from fiberglass to concrete, as Mr. Allen stated. And I've confirmed that with them last week.
Excellent.
The other item include, the estimate includes installation of erosion control measures that are proximate to and associated with the subdivision road. And installation credit has been provided to specific areas as detailed. He does note the erosion, so the credits were noted for erosion control barriers on the northern side of Cathy's Way. Fifty percent installation credit was provided due to the controls being installed. He does note here, however, the controls were not entrenched or towed in, as shown on sheet 12 of the plans. Thus, 130 feet has been credited for the installations reflected within the maintenance portion. Also notes erosion control barriers to the western side of Lot 1. Full installation credit was provided, as stump grindings have been provided, and is reflected within the maintenance portion. Third, there is the remaining erosion control barriers along the southwest side of Lot 8. And the erosion control barriers associated with the stormwater management system have not been installed yet. There has been a 20% administration contingency added to the estimate for inspections contracted administration. Earlier, Mr. Allen requested that that be reduced to 10%. Graves provided comment on that. The notes here that the purpose of the construction cost estimate was to provide the planning board with an engineer's opinion of possible construction value for the project. Their estimate is based on typical municipal bid, public works projects subject to state wage rates. They use the state wage rates as the municipal will be required to pay prevailing wage, state wage rates, should the ultimately become responsible for completing the project. So the rates indicate, within this estimate, reflect current market conditions.
If I may state, I'm fine with the estimate that they came up with.
Okay.
I'm not looking to reduce it or, I'm okay with it.
Okay, because, yeah.
I wanted to...
Just in this day and age, where everything is so much more...
It's going up all the time.
It might be more than 20, you know.
Diesel fuel is ridiculous. Okay.
And to close, in the communication, he notes here, Jeff Walsh notes here, that "In addition, the construction estimate should not be construed to be a final list of items that are incomplete. At each drawdown requested by the developer, individual line items will be evaluated for completeness. Unit prices may be revised to reflect current cost of work, and items may be added or deleted from the estimate if needed. Streets and applicable amenities are not considered approved until they are accepted by the town vote as public streets, or until the final release of the planning board for private streets." And again, signed by Jeff Walsh, CC to Mr. Allen and our DPW director. The subsequent sheets here is the revised budget from Graves Engineering dated June 10th, 2022. And he proposes a rounded total of 324,000. So that includes a 20% contingency, that includes credits for the work that he described here as related to stormwater. Does acknowledge that the off-road drainage system, to his notes here, have not been installed yet, so still holding a portion to that as well. And so, 324, 324,000, that's rounded, the exact amount is 323,493,60. Would also request that if the board were to, were to okay this amount, that the second piece too would be to ask the applicant for an additional 3,000 to cover the inspection costs, any additional inspection costs for Graves as well.
I've already put up 4,000. This is in addition to that?
Yes, yes, yes.
I haven't gotten any statements of exemptions.
Okay, I'm glad to send it to you.
Yeah, I have a problem with this right now.
Yeah, no, I'll send it to you.
I've never gotten the accounting of what's been done.
Okay.
Tony can take care of you with that.
So three, 324, plus you want another three?
So I'm not asking for another 3,000 to be added onto this. I'm asking for replenishment of the inspectional services account.
Oh.
Because now we're down to...
Okay, that's a different, that's a different eye liner. No, I think, I think your bond is, you know, you're... You have to meet this number, 324,000.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
My question is, Ben, since I've got the revised number, is this the only document I need in order to get lot releases? It's a performance bond, Town of Oxford's performance bond. My bond company has asked for the documents necessary for lot releases, and I've got this. I just want to make sure that this is all that we need. I mean, the bona fides of the bond company and all of that, of course, but this is the only document that needs to be completed for lot releases?
Well, we've still got to go through the inspections and all that.
From our end, from our end.
Right, so from our end, what was provided to Mr. Allen is, sorry, a sample boilerplate document of a performance bond for lot release, which would require an amount to be held. So that that document be completed in that, to reflect 324,000.
Right. What document is that? We, I don't have a copy of that either.
That is a boilerplate.
That's a boilerplate?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's the only one you have, right, Tony?
That is a boilerplate for you to fill out and to put in. For example, what we, what I would recommend clarity on is to understand which lots are requested to be released.
Of course.
So which, we don't have that information from you yet. And certainly on that document, to put the proper notation of the deed, reference book and page and so on.
But would the lots that I'm asking to be released be on the performance bond? Or correspondence to you in regard to that?
You should have it in the performance bond. Stated in there, which lots.
So each lot we lose, we're going to have a new performance bond?
Is this, no, this, this bond will cover the entire subdivision, am I right? This is for a completion?
This is for everything.
Yes, yes, but my question is, which lots is the applicant seeking to have released?
And we don't know that.
But couldn't he release all of them now, if he's got enough? Are you putting a cash bond up?
No, it's for a bond company. Well, I guess...
We've gotten burnt by bond companies before, that's why I'm very concerned about that.
You know what type of bond it's going to be? How, are you comfortable with what he's going to supply?
I am comfortable with the language in the performance, if he follows that boilerplate, yes.
And that we can get our money if we have to?
Like I said, we've had nothing but hot burn with performance bonds. I understand it's, you're paying money to have a performance bond placed on this, but it's only as good as the bond company itself. And we've had a lot of instances where those performance bonds weren't worth the paper they were printed on, when it came to going to try to collect. One was Henry Mash.
Yep.
Estates and...
One up on...
If I may give you some input, as of today's date, I have 323,786.15 of my own money into this road construction. I'm not going to walk.
I appreciate that. I don't, I don't want, I don't want you to walk either. I don't want you to walk.
But there's a bank involved.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean. We have nothing in real surety, other than the fact you're going to have a performance bond through Corporation XYZ, okay?
We also have $900,000 worth of lots at the market value. I have five homes sold right now.
So Tony, are you comfortable with the, what he's supplying for a bond? That we can adequately fix the road, finish it if we have to?
Yes, with an exception. So what I'd like to see is that document filled out by the applicant.
Yep.
So we can have legal counsel just review it, like, yes, for all the others.
And I'd like, I'd like legal counsel to review the bond holdup.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, and what I would ask of the board is to let us know if you are okay with Graves' recommendation for that dollar amount.
Absolutely.
And, you know, Mr. Allen, so therefore, Mr. Allen can then complete this performance bond, and we'll have counsel review. We could have this at the next meeting for signature, or if you wish to, to sign that now, not to sign that, but to give an okay to, for signature.
We should probably wait till we get everything all.
Yeah, you got to get, you got to have everything.
I's dotted and T's crossed, whatever the term is.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that, that number for the... Because that Graves is, you know...
No, that meets, that meets what the criteria of what we're looking for.
Exactly, and it's also up right up to June, you know, it's current, it's not like it's...
It was, it was submitted on Friday.
Which is good, you know, because, you know, even the 20%, I'm like, geez, the way things are going, who knows, it could be 30%, you know, so...
Yeah, and that's what, we wanted to get the most current...
Yeah, which is good.
So we can all work in real time.
I don't have a problem with that amount.
I don't have a problem with the amount, I just want to make sure we're covered. That's, that's it. There's nothing better than cash, I understand that, okay? And we've had quite a few that have gone that route with us, and it's worked out well, because as you finish things, you got your money back for that and everything else. And we were able to work as a town very well with that.
I'm not sure what he's saying, you're not going to take a bond?
No, he's not saying that.
I'm not saying that. We've had problems with bonds.
Oh, I know that, and I was here in the eighties and the nineties.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Not well aware.
I know.
We hear, oh, we want to release this one, release this one, next you know, there's no more to release, and the road's not done.
Yeah, and then the performance company comes up with a reason why they're not going to pay, okay?
I've got five other subdivisions that I've completed.
Yep.
Any other comments from the board regarding the numbers from Graves?
No, the number's good, as far as I'm concerned.
So we're just, we're going to get it, we're going to get it filled out, reviewed by town council, and then, do you want to do the next meeting, or do you want to wait?
No, we'll be ready for the next meeting.
Going to be a late one.
I'll have those numbers to Tony for Wednesday.
Going to be a late one, maybe.
Never knows.
You never know, exactly. We don't have to vote on anything, do we? Nope, I don't think so.
I think we got, I got the direction from the board here.
Yeah, you got the direction.
That you're okay with this number. And again, I would ask that for the next meeting, that the generalists will provide us with the $3,000 for, and I will provide you with the follow-up on Graves, so you have that for your benefit.
Town of Oxford?
Yes, yes, so the 3,000 to replenish the inspections account.
Can I ask you a question? Why is the town engineer not doing this?
Capacity.
There's more subdivisions?
There's more projects.
No, I'm just curious.
He's fixing all the roads.
He's, he's...
Repaving all the roads, he's too busy.
Economic developing person too, he's doing a lot of that.
He's got to shovel and hot patch.
Sutton Avenue's being fixed. I drive there every day. All right, any other, any other comments? All right, so you're going to supply that filled-out bond form?
And the information on the bond company?
As soon as you can.
Yeah, you got to get, you got to get it to Tony, so he can get it to town council and have it reviewed for our next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, have a good night.
It's a pleasure. You too.
Thank you.
Old, am I there? Yeah, Old Business, 175 and 191 Southbridge Road, Eastland Partners, status of project?
Yes, Chad is here from Eastland.
This is the chairman, I'm stepping down.
All right.
Hi, good evening. For the record, I'm Chad Boardman with Eastland Partners doing 175, 191 Southbridge Road. Kind of been a few months, actually, I haven't seen you guys in a bit. And we finally actually made some progress. The last time in here, I was having some difficulties with national grid, and I've got the power generated out there. And we do have our, for the last probably about four weeks or so, have our crushing plants finally set up out there and actually processing material out there. So that's been going quite well. We've also been working with Jared at the DPW for, I kind of gave a lengthy discussion the last time about the Mass Works grant and how sewer is going to run down our property, which is going to tie in the other part of Route 20 towards Charlton, where the town's going to be taking sewer from up there and bringing it down towards our property, and we're going to take it from our property and potentially go into Auburn. So Jared and I have been working with that. Jen, of course, has been helping as well. And most importantly, the other day, I have, I've been helping with, kind of secure the easements for the town, because the town's been real busy as well. And just the other day, we believe we're about 90% secured with an easement for the town with charter. So I've got a couple more parcels I have to deal with for the easement for the sewer, but everything's looking pretty good for right now, to allow that to happen. Again, bits and pieces, as you might see daily, maybe driving up there, I'm going to be clearing some localized brush along Route 20 as well, around the curve where we're associated, probably about 400, 4500 feet now that, you know, the growing seasons here and all the branches are filling in with leaves and stuff for sightline visibility. So we've made a request with the Mass DOT to give them a heads up that we're going to be clearing, you know, small brush, not really trees, but for sightline, getting trucks in and out of the site. See what else we've got. Earlier on, we did, we were stripping a parcel to blast, and we did inadvertently send loom out to our abutting property. And the loom was stripped to be used potentially if we were ever to go bye-bye or whatever, unlike the last guy, kind of sent all the loom away. We located a parcel that abuts us, that already had loom on it, and unknowns been announced to us, we, kind of files us into a land disturbance permit technically. So we have, we halted the work to do that, and we have filed for a permit through Jared, and I think conservation, to actually do that parcel, to at least identify that. So the next time when we go to strip some material, that material can go to the appropriate place, and we have all the boxes checked with the town, of course, and all the town boards, so we won't do that again. It is out of the buffer zone, quite far out of the buffer zone, but we want to adhere to the permits and regulations necessary. Other than that, we're going to be starting to blast again, and it's been a little while since we were in there, and we'll probably do some shots in the next couple of weeks. Typically, what happens with a lot of the shots, again, is then we get notified, you know, from abutters, but we do have people, we, most importantly, the condominium community. Next to us, we have a direct contact with the Management Association, we do send them an email just for a heads up, we might be blasting for the next two weeks. So we do that in advance as well. Again, any of the blasting that has occurred, there's certain criteria that so many feet away for the blast, that you're supposed to notify everybody. We've been adhering to that and actually going a little further out of the radius, quite honestly, just to be good neighbors. Let's see, what else do we have? Actually, this week, I actually made some progress with Aquarium Water Company. They're kind of on the deadline of actually working with Mass DOT to determine what size water main that's going out on the street, which can actually service our property. So they have some consultants that they've met with, and I believe I should know midweek this week, what size the mains are, that they're going to propose out on the street. So typically, they already know what our flows will be for potentially the 320 residential units, they know the potential water usage for the commercial desired if we were to move forward with some type of pad configuration for, you know, commercial growth. They know what the water quantities would be, and so they're determining proper-sized pipe to be put out on the road in advance before they build the highway, of course. So that's, that's some good encouragement there.
So has anything happened with Mass DOT about when they're going to start the highway improvements?
That seems to be, yeah, that's, that's a role, yeah, that's a moving target. You know, we thought, we thought two years, remember, I was here years ago saying, hey, we got to move, yeah, and from what I understand, they are doing all... we gotta move, yeah, and from what I understand, they, they are doing all the takings. Maybe you've heard some, maybe concerned citizens getting the letters in the mail, but us, obviously being a large land owner, we were, did get the land takings for the easements, the land that they're taking for the highway as well, so that is in process. And that, that's usually step one, so it has hit that design stage where they're taking the properties from all the abutters and things right now. So that's a good, that's a good sign that within the next year, they're gonna start construction. Of course, it's a design build, which kinda means the plans are taken to a certain stage and then they, you bid, a large company would bid to take on more of the finalized engineering plans and actually do the construction as well, so...
That's the concern, is what this design is actually gonna look like even if...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's a big important step of how...
Yeah, for the last year, for the last year, it's funny, I think maybe a few months ago, you know, when we were permitting and, you know, when we were even in front of you guys, you know, they moved the road from 80 feet onto our property at one time.
Right.
And then they changed the elevation, they went deeper into the ground at one time. So then, that we went a year of permitting back and forth, how are we gonna make this intersection with the controlled stop, which was the concern all along for the, maybe the future?
Well, that third lane too.
And then, then I spent a fortune in engineering and then all of a sudden, I get a notification from the Mass DOT and it's moving 75 feet back to, in the other direction, and it's getting raised. So unfortunately, which is good, they have, the final set of plans have been approved to be sent out to the, the next engineering people. There is concessions for, of course, the turn lanes for our property for when that development is built and the commercial component is put into use, that, that intersection would be possibly a controlled stop. And like I said, I think the last meeting, they're actually putting conduits in the ground and certain things in advance so to actually put the streetlights and things, say, seven years from now or whatever, that everything in the road that they're building was kinda planned for, so which, which is very good, you know, that's just, that's smart planning, so we're encouraged by that. And so everything, everything there looks, looks pretty decent. But later this week, I think the engineers, not speaking for Tony, but I think we were gonna do some tech review meetings with our engineers with some concepts for the residential component, so at least I can start soon coming into here with some type of, you know, project for the, you know, the residential portion as well.
And I guess as far as timeline, but originally, you're gonna do the commercial, develop the commercial site first.
Well, that's, that's a component, that's a component, 'cause we need to actually get access to get even to the residential, 'cause you guys need multiple ways in, of course. So there's significant cuts, and that's what we're kind of doing now in the project, is some real heavy cuts, heavy-duty cuts, just to, to establish that, that way in, which is, which is good. And the rock has been actually breaking great, actually, if that's a term, so it's, it's been working great, it's making great material. There's been some moves instead of, you know, of actually taking the material that's actually processed on the site to potentially be used in the future for all the construction of the, the highway itself, so it's, kinda reduces some, you know, traffic, you know, if you've got millions of trucks going on, at least it's localized to that area. Of course, nothing's finalized because everything's all bid, bid to win, but we've been reaching out to the, the larger people, you know, that do large state jobs, so, just to try to keep the traffic down to a minimum. Offer, offer, of course, an attractive price for the materials.
Excellent. Any other comments, questions? Definitely, thank you very much for the update.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I'll be back here, like I said, in a couple of months and we're going, meeting with Tony, and hopefully I've made some strides with the rest of the easements for the sewer line for the Mass Works grant. Of course, you know, the last time I was in here, you know, the, the town got that great Mass Works grant with Tony's and Jared's and Jen's help, and so we're looking forward to doing that as well.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
Rich is back. Okay, let's just jump back real quick to Monument Estates. Tony gave me the revised covenant, release of covenant. It has June 13th on it and it says Monument Estates. So I think...
So should he read it into record?
Do we need to read it into it? I can.
Yeah, motion to accept it.
Motion by Jeff to accept it.
Second it.
Seconded by Roger. Any other comments? There being none, we call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously.
So I'm gonna sit and sign it, right?
He just made it back, we were just about to close the meeting. Oh, look, 608 Main Street. Next item under Old Business is 608 Main Street, status of stormwater basin. Do I have anything on that or...
No, I'd just like to provide a, a quick update and I'd like to follow back up with the board, probably later in, in July. So we did talk to council, council is recommending that we get a, an engineer to, to review the work that's been done and to provide a, a report back to the detrimental impact it may have to that system and to the general stormwater mitigation. If there is to be any, if there is to be any order, any order action to be done, council advised us that we should have an engineer do review. So we will, Jared and I will go back and it's, you may recall, Director Duval noted in his earlier one, in his earlier memo, going back on this project, we would in any event anticipate a third party to assist due to capacity. So he and I will follow up and also with, with council in the coming weeks and get a understanding of how much it would cost for this engineer's report. And so I'd like to come back to this board late July, just to provide an update where we are on that. The orders, we're told it takes time to, to go through the process, but we do need to document and have a professional stamp that it would indeed create harm to the, to the system. Even though there was a clear violation, and, and that's what we, we, we mentioned, right? That there was, it's not consistent with the approval, but as under the enforcement, they've advised us that we do need to, to have...
Not the words, town's gonna pay to get it.
A document in place.
This is, you know, wait till something bad happens, you know, if that, whatever reason, overflows and floods out, root valve and somebody, you know, everybody gets in a bad car accident because their stormwater system failed, you know, and then...
Tony, can I ask a quick question without ramping everything back up again? Who, who are we gonna go after to fix this?
So it would go back to the owner of the property.
Okay. And they know that we're doing this?
We've sent two communications, at least to them, via certified mail.
And they're, they're aware that whatever we do, they're gonna pay?
We've never received an acknowledgement from them, that they've actually received the, the documents, but...
They don't care to know.
If there need, if there needs to be an order, then, then we're gonna pursue that.
Did we send it certified mail?
We did, we did.
Oh, so then they did get it?
We did.
So we can prove that they got them, okay.
We never received any communication back from them, though.
Okay.
We did not receive a call or anything.
Yeah, they're choosing to ignore it till...
They just open it, dies.
It started first, step one was just a general inquiry, you know, please contact us, we, we've noticed some changes done here, we'd like to discuss. Step two was a, a letter certified to, sent thus far, so, without any responses, and since our last discussion, I mentioned we'd follow up with our own council to discuss what next steps we could do. But indeed, to, to a point that was made, it comes at a, the, the cost of enforcement is a real thing.
Okay.
So Tony, I just have a question on that. So it's two, it's a, it's like a duplex, so I know the builder came before us, put him up, and I don't know, has it sold again? So is it, has there been two owners in that particular or is it just one owner?
So it's, it's a condo building and on the master deed, it does reflect, so there's two, two, two owners, 608A, 608B, two on, on record. And this pertains to the, the unit to the...
Right.
Right, if you will. And it's on their side. It was filled in with, with the stone.
Right, but has there been, has there only been one owner of 608B or has there been more than one?
Believe there's only been one. Don't believe it's sold.
'Cause I know one of them, I think, was up for sale at one time.
All right, so end of July, we'll, we'll get back into it, right? After you...
Yes, we'll, we'll work through it in the, in the coming weeks and provide another update, big or small, we'll give you an update.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the town's doing everything right, certified letter, certified mail, it's just, it's just too bad it's gotten to this stage.
Luckily, it hasn't taken too long. All right, so let's move on to submissions, 200 Lester Street.
So this is 200 Lester Street?
Application for site plan review and approval minor, applicant and owner is Oxford Transfer Station LLC, stormwater management improvements. Anybody here from the transfer station? I'm gonna guess no.
Not tonight.
You're not from the transfer station? So we've got letters from Walsh, do I have to read the whole thing from them?
I'm happy to provide a quick overview, though, just...
Please do.
No, no. It's only a submission, so...
With a bulk trash.
No, I think it's like in the corner.
Yeah, it's only a submission, the scope of it is that they're adding a gravel wetland and, and the proposed development also includes the installation of two water quality units for industrial stormwater pre-treatment. So, and as Mary said, it's only a submission, they're currently going before a conservation commission, and this, the application was for minor site plan review and approval.
They came in front of the technical review committee and based upon everything that was discussed in there, we determined it would just be, you know, submit tonight, approve tonight, and let it go through all appropriate departments.
And the big piece.
It's just superficial, it's all underground-type work. It doesn't affect the building, they're not gonna do anything to any of the buildings, it's just installing new, new drainage, and it's going into a pretty sophisticated stormwater management system in the back of the property.
The reason they're doing this, Tony, is...
Compliance with BMPs, best management practices.
Okay, excellent.
Not improving the site.
Improving the, maintaining a clean site for the town of Oxford.
And so sheet C 2.0 shows the, the gist of it, right, which the bulk of the work is in the back, which is the wetland area. And then that pre-treatment structure is right here, and they do show renderings of it and so on. They will be going before Conservation soon.
Yeah, there's like a small, they're only in the buffer a little bit over on the right, right?
Correct, correct. So...
Anybody have any comments or questions, Boston? Call to project, no?
Form submitted, completed, they're paying, they're paying all their bills, they're paying their taxes and...
I make a motion, we accept this plan to go through all the appropriate boards and stuff like that as a minor site plan approval.
Moved by Jeff.
So, sorry, was that to also approve it?
Yes.
Yes.
Accept the submission?
As a minor site, as a minor.
Approve it as a minor.
Yep.
Seconded by Rich? And you think, Tony, we've got everything we need, document-wise, submission-wise?
Yes.
Any other comments? Call for the vote, I vote aye.
Aye.
Vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. I'll just thank you, 'cause, you know, you're here, so, you can be the representative. All right. Planning director report.
I would like to follow up in the coming weeks, Mr. Chairman, with you about the subdivision rules and regs.
Okay.
No, no urgency, but I'd like to follow up on finer points of it, I guess.
Yep. You wanna get home for the game, I know.
There's something going on tonight. Okay.
It's all right, we all received your latest update at the last meeting.
Yes, and, and I, so truly, I don't have another update since then, but, but I know as a group, we discussed a little bit about the requirements of the A and R and, and the subdivision definitive preliminary and so on, but I know we had some, as a group, we had some discussion too and I'd like to follow up with you on it as well.
Yep. Awesome. Anything else besides that?
Well, other than our next meeting, as you know, is June 27th.
And as, I don't know if everybody heard, but we have a, we have a contract with a, with a sound company, you know?
Yes, peer reviewer to, for the, relative to the sound study, HMMH, we, we have them on board, of course, peer review paid by the applicant, and do expect to either have a report or an update on that, and likewise, working with, we'll get a, an opinion from council as well, that was requested at that meeting, so. Would, would hope to have something, if not by the end of this week, early next week, for, for the board to deliberate at the 20, meeting on the 27th, so...
Okay, awesome. Anything else?
Okay, Chris.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Jeff to adjourn. Any other, any discussion? Call for a vote, I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously.